Welcome everyone. We just came back from the closed sessions and we are looking forward to hear study sessions reference to the policy on city filming procedure presentation by Megan Wischner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, members of the city council. I don't know that I'm...hello? Testing? I'm on. So the item before you tonight is a policy on...well, it's a consideration for a policy on our cities filming procedures and processes. The City of Fountain Valley is committed to open and transparent governance and public access to decision making. Filming and broadcasting public meetings are one way the city provides residents with convenient access to important discussions and decisions that affect the community. In tonight's presentation, I'm going to walk you through the city's current informal protocol when it comes to city filming and broadcasting meetings, events, et cetera. So the city does utilize a third-party service operated by the Public Cable Television Authority, also known as PCTA. And they assist us with streaming and archiving governmental meetings. Because we are short-staffed in the filming and marketing communications department here in City Hall, we do utilize the PCTA quite frequently to film and record and broadcast and archive most of our city meetings and events. Some regularly filmed meetings and broadcast events include regular city council meetings, including study sessions, special city council meetings, planning commission meetings, other events of significant interest to the public, including City of the City, Mayor, City Manager's message, Mayor's breakfast, city podcasts, concerts in the park, holiday tree lighting, senior dances, National Night Out, Veterans Day, Memorial Day ceremonies, Youth and Government Day, Summer Fest, et cetera. There are...this list is not incomprehensive. There are other events that are filmed depending on the year. Meetings that are not regularly filmed and broadcast by the PCTA include the city's bi-annual strategic planning sessions, city council workshops and informal briefings, and then advisory board and commission meetings other than the planning commission meetings. So currently, city staff in relation with the Board of Directors and the supervising liaison for the PCTA have an informal protocol in place when it comes to requesting internal filming requests at the City of Fountain Valley. Currently, our process includes city staff completing a production request form approved by their department head. The production request form is then shared with myself, who serves as the liaison between the city and the PCTA. I will vet and look over that request form and send it to PCTA. If PCTA is available, they will provide an estimated cost associated with the production being requested, and if approved, assign a producer and camera person to the production. The city utilizes PEG funds to pay for this third-party service. I want to know, it does not come out of the general fund? It comes out of a PEG fund, which is financial resources that are collected by a local government entity from cable and video service providers such as PCTA dedicated to public, educational and governmental television shows and related facilities. So most of what we are broadcasting and filming is educational and governmental, and that applies to that PEG fund. Turnaround time for a production on average is about one to two weeks after filming takes place. The city then receives a downloadable link to share on their social media website, et cetera. PCTA then airs the production on local television channel, Channel 3, here in town. This is just a snapshot of what our internal video production request form looks like. Again, this is available to all staff here at City Hall. If they have an event or a service that they want PCTA to cover, they will fill this out, get their department head's approval, and then share that with me to then share with the PCTA. Currently, 2025 video productions to date through the PCTA are as follows. I'm not going to list out all of them. You can go ahead and take a quick glance. This is from January 2025 until now. The bottom two are upcoming, one this weekend and one in the holiday season. Nothing else has been submitted currently to myself or the PCTA. Some additional staff productions that take place that I film would include Mayor's message, a city podcast, and then different social media initiatives such as we rolled out A Meet the Staff social media campaign. And then I also will take footage at ribbon cuttings and city events and then produce short videos for social media. City also may utilize other third-party vendors. A good example of this is JPW Communications. We have them on a contract, and they assist for additional video productions. One that they do regularly is filming our State of the City event. And then, as I mentioned, in-house staff also does film. That is a snapshot of our podcast. I assist with filming and producing our city podcast. At a recent council meeting, this was brought up as a future consideration item, so we are bringing this back to city council to see if there is interest in establishing some sort of formal policy that staff can look to when they are wanting to film or broadcast events or city council or public meetings. So we are seeking...I'm seeking direction from city council on establishing an official policy, or if you'd like us to proceed as is with the informal way of filming and broadcasting events and meetings. So with that, I am available for any follow-up questions and am seeking direction from city council.
Okay. So if I remember correctly, this issue was brought up by a council member, Konstantin, and second by Councilmember Grandis.
My question is, this was never an issue in the past, so how has it become an issue now?
Well, I mean personally, I did bring this up. I think it's a great idea. I don't want us to...and nothing personal against any council member, but I don't want us to be wanting to have this filmed and that filmed and staff running and just...and PCTA too, being potentially taxed time-wise and energy. And so if one of us has an idea about filming, we can, you know, get that over to Maggie and she can talk to us all individually and see if there's a consensus, if there's means to have whatever filmed, whether it's by Megan or by PCTA. I think we did need to have a policy in place.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for sharing that thoughts.
Sure.
The way I look at it is, first of all, I sit on PCTA as well as council member Harper. The beauty of how it was in the past is, you know, all the event coming up is usually drive by staff already. This is what we recommend. Do you like to continue? Or you want to add something or make any change? And that direction is basically for the mayor who wears the mayorship of that year. So now we start putting policy in places like you're limited the creativity of the mayor of that ship. You might have some way of doing things, but the next mayor might have a different way of doing things. So you got to go back and revisit the policy. Now, if you're concerned about overspending, as a matter of fact, my colleague, council member Grant Harper, can share with you that in the last PCTA meeting, we have set a budget within the PEGs fund.
Right.
So it doesn't go outside that boundary. So it doesn't affect the city general fund or the franchisee fund. And I'll leave that to my colleague because I was absent. We had to have a designate survivor while we all traveled to Japan, so it was you. So I'll leave to you. You know, the city needs to run if, you know, if we're not around. So I'll let you to share that. And, you know, to me, I think it's great the way it is, but that's my opinion.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say I'm happy that you all made it back safely, so it was a good trip. But yeah, I guess my question for the policy that was drafted, is that sort of just a documentation of how the way we do it now?
Correct. Yeah, so that's common practice. It's what we've been doing for years and years. We have no set documentation that I refer to and say, "We film a mayor's message everywhere. We film a State of the City everywhere." This is just something we've done in past years that I've carried over to future years. So I don't have anything that I can physically pull up and see what we're, I guess, mandated to film year after year.
Okay.
PCTA is a little bit different because we are working with a supervising liaison, and he does share the PEG budget at the beginning of the year. And then as far as when staff want to request filming of their events, that goes through me. So we did, we cut back on a few concerts this year just because we are getting limited viewership through Channel 3, which in turn gives us less PEG funds. So we did cut back on a few of the events that we regularly film just because of budget. But I think this is more too for a mayor's message or a city manager's message or, I guess, internal...when we work with PCTA, it's still internal, but it's also the stuff that I kind of oversee. Because when I'm working with PCTA, we have our, like I said, our informal protocol in place. I have a request form. I have a budget I have to adhere to. So if we're going to go over that budget, I have to deny some of the events that are coming through from staff. So that kind of helps me manage through the PCTA side of things, but it's more so on what I'm filming and what we're filming internally. Mayor's message. And then as far as when staff want to request filming of their events, that goes through me. So we did, we cut back on a few concerts this year, just because we are getting limited viewership through Channel 3, which in turn gives us less PEG funds. So we did cut back on a few of the events that we regularly film, just because of budget. But I think this is more too for a Mayor's Message, or a City Manager's Message, or I guess, internal, when we work with PCTA, it's still internal, but it's also the stuff that I kind of oversee. Because when I'm working with PCTA, we have our, like I said, our informal protocol in place, I have a request form, I have a budget I have to adhere to. So if we're going to go over that budget, I have to deny some of the events that are coming through from staff. So that kind of helps me manage through the PCTA side of things, but it's more so on what I'm filming and what we're filming internally. Mayor's Message, City Manager's Message, State of the City, strategic planning meetings, all the public-facing meetings too.
Would it, do you think it's useful to have a policy, or it doesn't really make a big difference, or what's, you know, you're the one that's going to be kind of...
I mean, it's always good to have something to reference, I don't know that it's necessary just because I'm only one person, so if I can't take on too many stuff, I'm not going to be able to do it. So right now, what common practice is, is I connect with who the mayor is that year and see what their priorities are. So you did Facebook Lives, Glenn did the Podcast, Ted's doing something with PCTA. So I kind of base that off of what the mayor's priorities when it comes to filming is. So that might vary on an annual basis.
Yeah. Okay, a question for the attorney, city attorney, if we make it a policy, then does that carry any additional, I guess, restrictions or legal issues?
Trying to think of how we get challenged for not taping a meeting. I suppose somebody could say we violated a policy. Usually when you have a policy, you try to say that failing to adhere to the policy is a breach in some standard of care, so that's usually some kind of a tort action. I'm having trouble finding a way that baking this into a policy would create some kind of a legal issue. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, I just think that this is probably one of those low-risk situations by putting it into a policy, but when you do put it into a policy, it tends to hamstring a little bit, so you don't have the discretion down the road if ever you decide. We want to have a meeting where people can talk freely and openly about something, say, some of the meetings we've had over at the Rec Center, you know, there's been some council, not council decisions, sorry, staff decisions, that we want to make sure that people from the audience, from the public, have the ability to come and speak frankly. So we're not going to put everybody on TV. So by putting a policy in place, we lose some of that discretion.
And we'd have to write out every meeting too, so there's other types of advisory and board meetings that aren't filmed, so we'd have to go in and write out, we don't film, say for instance, HGD or any of those types of meetings, strategic planning's not normally filmed, so that's something we'd have to go in and designate whether that's filmed or not.
Right, that's a great point, which goes back to my point earlier. I don't see an issue. Like you said, in the past, Councilmember Harper did with Facebook, Councilmember Grandis did with Podcast, I did with PCTA. And if we start putting a policy, it's going, you know, it's going to limit the creativity on the next mayor's. What happened next mayor's is my colleague right here, Vice Mayor Jim Kinnon, he might have a great idea, but he can't do it because there's a policy. Now we got to bring it back and vote, and it is okay to have that. So me, it has not been an issue, and so to me, this is, once again, that's my opinion, it's a waste of time. Unless it becomes an issue, unless we are burdened with the city with overspending the fund, then there's, then we should limit, the spending is more important than the creativity. We shouldn't limit the creativity, the creativity. And Councilmember Harper, we have to adopt a budget, and I believe you shared that at the last meeting already. We have to work with this budget, so the mayor that comes in play has to work within those parameter of the budget. That's my opinion.
And I...
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just thinking, if we wanted specifically towards the Mayor's Message or Update, or we could put that in very vaguely too, to the policy, we could say something along the lines of Mayor's Message. It doesn't have to be spelled out on exactly what, how we're filming that Mayor's Message. That's just another option.
Okay, Councilmember Grandis.
Yeah, so I was on PCTA for four years, I think, and treasurer for all four years, or last two and a half years. And one of my big concerns with them is a going concern. They were burning money that they weren't going to remain viable. So we put in budgets, we cut back on staff, we now have a policy through PCTA that the City of Fountain Valley can only spend what PEG phase they come in. And I agree with the mayor, he should be allowed to do how he wants. In terms of the Mayor's Message, I worked with you, you were awesome. I thought it was much more intimate that it would be like a one-on-one. He chose to do something with PCTA, that's up to the mayor, as long as it's within budget. The only thing, the reason I seconded it was for completely different reasoning. I think there are certain events that should be broadcast, like, sorry mayor, but your Mayor's Breakfast are really good, and they're not filmed. And it's the same 25 people that go to every event that see everything, it's almost a waste of time, because nobody gets to see all this great information. So something like the Mayor's Breakfast, I think that should be a required broadcast. Doesn't have to be live, it could be filmed and reshot, and it doesn't have to be PCTA. You know, when I did the Mayor's Breakfast, it wasn't PCTA. So that's the angle, I wanted to see more, not try to constrain the mayor in any way.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Grandis, for that, for those thoughts. As a matter of fact, you did, you know, give me a suggestion that I should broadcast that, and I welcome those suggestions, but I have a different thinking. For those who really want to know the mayor's, you know, attend the Mayor's Breakfast and want to learn something new, I want them to come in. I want to see that physical body, make that effort to come in. So not only I get to meet them, but the audience that there, I've never seen that, oh, that's a new audience. I want that interaction, or staff to meet new people, not just me delivering the message. So if they find the information worthwhile for them and want to meet other staff, that was my point. If it's important to you, then show up. That was my point.
Not everybody can make it though.
Understood.
And if they can...
You did too good of a job not to broadcast.
That can also be at the mayor's discretion, I can touch base, I touched base with you at the beginning of the year, that's what, something you wanted, something Ted did not want, so I could touch base with the next mayor and see. But if that is something that City Council wants to move forward to permanently broadcast, then I'm happy to do that as well.
I don't think we need a written policy, I think that not necessary.
Councilmember...
Just one other thing to consider, so a lot of times policies are written as a best practice to give staff direction, especially new staff when they come to a new organization. So we typically do SOPs, standard operating procedures, and it's really to help kind of the future staff to know what to do when they come into an organization. So if there's a benefit for that, that might kind of factor in for why we would do something like this, but...
And like I said, we can keep language pretty vague too. We'd bring the policy back to City Council for their approval and adoption, but if that is the direction you wanted to go, I can make sure the language in there is vague, that way it's not limiting creativity for the mayor.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then, Councilmember Harper, you guys something to say? Oh, I wasn't sure. Okay, anybody else?
So, you know, a policy is not necessary, just like Vice Mayor Jim Kinnon stated, you know, the draft that Megan has, we can just say standard of operation, so we can keep that, and we don't need a policy in place.
Right.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Megan, and good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Okay, our next presentation is going to be Employee Engagement Committee Update. Presentation by Jenny Worsham, Community Services and Manager, and Robin Harnish, Finance Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jenny Worsham, I'm the Community Services Manager and Co-Chair of the Engagement Committee, and I'm here with Robin to present an update for you guys on the Engagement Committee. So we're going to start with, we're going to review our objective, our strategic objective, we'll present our 25, 26 accomplishments and goals, and then we'll conclude with some time for any questions that you may have. So the strategic plan, the executive team developed with the City Council, a strategic plan goal of attracting and retaining quality staff with the following objective. The Employee Engagement Committee will present efforts and ideas to expand the program, include hiring trends, initiatives, telework, education, training, succession planning, and leadership. So since January, from January through August, we have been very busy, the Engagement Committee, we've been having a lot of fun. We hosted nine citywide events, to include two Free the Files Days, one in February and one in June, Public Service Week recognition, Independence Day BBQ, multicultural potluck, a chili cook-off, a Spring Potting Day, a Spring Bake Off, and then Summer Fest, of course, where we provided free entry and food for the entire Fountain Valley team. We organized three healthy challenges, so we had a January walking challenge, a 60-day steps challenge, and then lunchtime yoga sessions were also offered recently. We distributed nine employee newsletters, we elevated the exposure of the Employee Recognition Program by promoting the application and highlighting and celebrating the recipients in the employee's newsletter. We thought that was really important, so all the employees knew who was being recognized by that program, which has increased the amount of people being nominated and receiving those awards as well. We hosted a food drive for non-perishable food, where we collected food at the Employee Independence Day BBQ, and then the food was delivered to Coastline College, which was really appreciated and very fun for us. We organized the second Fountain Valley Leadership Academy, which is a full class of 15, and actually kicked off today at Coastline College. And then the permanent implementation of our 410 work schedule, which has been very popular with the team. So now I will turn it over to my co-chair, Robin Harnish.
Good evening. All right, so our subcommittees, we did a survey in July for employees, and based on the feedback that we received, we decided to make some adjustments to our subcommittees. So we have the three reoccurring, which is Professional Development, Employee Morale and Retention, Community Engagement, and then we added the new one of Physical Activities, that was based on the feedback we received, wanting some more pickleball and the Fun Run and some other events like that that they can participate in. We had a brainstorming session as well, which led to all of that. So our goals for this coming year, we have the Leadership Academy, which just started today, and that's going to run through October. We also have a citywide mentorship program. We have Employee Morale and Retention, the new events, which are going to include a Bring a Loved One to Work Day, some off-site sporting events, and we're exploring some other ideas like Bingo Bash and Taco Tuesday. Under Community Engagement, we're looking to facilitate another holiday food drive, and we're also looking at opportunities for employees to volunteer in the community and expand donations. For physical activities, that Fun Run that's this Saturday, that was one of them, Sports League and Team Challenges. And so we do want to thank all of our committee members, some of them are here tonight, and we're very proud of everything we've accomplished so far, and really excited about what we're going to do going forward. And, yeah, and we are here for, sorry, there you go, there's our list of committee members, and of course, directors that help us out. And so we are here for questions, if you have any.
All right, thank you so much. I just have a few questions. First of all, is that a cost to the city of all the subcommittees and the event that you want to have? That's number one. Number two, liability, because you have people involved, be part of the community, what are the liability if, should something happen to those who participate or engage in it? And is there a risk as well?
So we do have a budget, so that was, it is reduced compared to last year, but we are working as a team currently to see how we can reduce our costs, or maybe through some budget transfers, you know, fix any gaps. But as far as, what was your next question? You said about liability, right? Or risk?
So you said the budget, what's the budget?
$55,000?
So currently, you're asking $55,000 annually?
That's what it is this year, yes.
This year?
Yes.
So there's a potential increase every year?
No, necessarily, we actually cut it.
Okay.
From last year.
Oh, okay, okay, I just want to make sure I have clarifications. And liabilities to the participant?
There could be, there could be, but we do run this by Risk Management and HR when there's any question about that. So we do make sure that everyone is on board with, if there were to be something, I'm not aware of anything.
I want to explore a little bit further on that, just want to make sure that, you know, it's, by no means, it's a great idea, you know, thinking outside the box. The idea, I think of this, is to have them participate and hopefully in the future, be part of the, either city staff, or be volunteering for the city, you know, as planning commissioners, or any other committee that we have, which is great. But I just want to make sure at the same time that we cover a base, because there's so many activity here.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
These are city employees participating.
I know, but if they participate outside the work, you know, if something happens...
No.
Is that an issue? I don't know.
You were saying they may get jobs on Planning Commission, or these are city employees.
I know, but during the engagement, they get hurt participating, that's what I'm saying. How is that going to come in play?
There's a risk getting out of bed in the morning, I mean, come on.
You know, you got to weigh in everything else, not just ignore it.
There's nothing to ignore.
So I just want to see that we make sure we cover a base, even though, you know, they'd be volunteering outside the work, or doing the work hour, you know?
Yeah, yes, it's, the volunteering would be during, we haven't done anything outside except for Summer Fest and things like that, so we've run everything by Heather, our Risk Manager, and HR before we plan anything. So any of these physical activities that we're doing, we're running it by first, we've had some ideas that got the big no, and we didn't move forward with them for that exact reason. So yes, we are definitely taking all of that into account.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Everyone's safety is important to us, for sure.
Yes, thank you.
So no skydiving or bungee jumping?
No skydiving, no, no skating, you know.
All right. Councilmember Grandis?
So this is, first off, great job. This is something that, you know, we started just a couple of years ago, and I think it's just wonderful that we're doing this. My question is, can council participate?
Absolutely.
So you guys can have like a softball league and a pickleball league, and I'm in, but you have to let old people play like me.
Especially Councilmember Grandis, you make sure you have him sign a waiver.
Now you're thinking, that's smart.
You will know what's going on, you get all the emails that are sent out to all FE, and it'll be in the newsletter, so feel free to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you so much, great job, great presentations. Thank you. All right, let's see, well, it looks like, before we go to the next meeting, I want to check with my colleague, did you want a five-minute recess? Couple minutes? All right, a couple minutes, all right, we'll come back in a couple minutes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I called you order. The um, meeting of um Thursday, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and uh we go ahead and uh start with the invocation with Pastor Alfonso Ramirez.
I thank you for the opportunity and the pleasure to open your meeting with a prayer. Would you join me? Father, uh, we come to you, to your presence, Lord, looking for wisdom, looking for understanding. Give this body of, of uh council persons the ability to hear voices, to hear uh problems, to hear deals or dreams for the city, Lord. And we ask you that you would give them wisdom to, in the end, that would uh come out to a decision that would, that would be benefit to the city and to the, every citizen in, in the city. So we ask you, Father, as, as, as their job is not that easy, that you would give them their peace in their hearts, the ability to see the things, not just for today, but for the future of the city. So Father, we ask you that you would uh fill this place and give peace to each uh person that is here, whatever the problem they're bringing or the issues they're bringing, Lord, there would be a solution to it. So we give them, give them the wisdom to the, to the council to come up with the right answers. So we thank you for this, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ramirez. Um, once again, if you are able to stand, please join me to salute to the flag of this wonderful country and uh place your hand over your heart and yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, um, City Council, successor, agency housing authority, roll call, please.
Councilmember Constantine?
Here.
Councilmember Grandis?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Keneen?
Here.
Mayor, Chair Bowie?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Uh, City Attorney, is there any reportable action from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had reportable action on one item, that was item number three. Council voted five-zero to allow the attorney for the city to initiate a petition in a weapons matter. Uh, count items number one and four, there was a discussion, no reportable action, and item number two, we postponed until the next council meeting.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney, for the report. Um, Mr. City Clerk, is there any supplemental communications?
There was one item in regards to item number three, the treasurer's report. Uh, attachment one of the treasurer's report was updated as it was missing the sweep account inadvertently when it was first published.
Okay, thank you. Um, City Manager, Maggie Lee, um, would you please give your update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. In memory of uh Fire Chief Bill McQuade, um, I wanted to remind the community as the cost of medical care still continues to rise, the fire department feels it is important to make sure your family is covered in the event of an emergency. The City Fountain Valley is offering a program that is designed to help you during emergency situation called the paramedic membership program. This program offers residents of Fountain Valley an opportunity to participate in an annual sixty-dollar membership that will cover all out-of-pocket costs when your insurance is billed for nine-one-one emergency medical care and ambulance transportation. Um, the city will accept whatever is paid after insurance is deducted as payment in full. By participating in this voluntary program, you can receive paramedic ambulance coverage for a very moderate annual cost, the annual cost of the household membership is sixty dollar. The paramedic uh membership program has been an official program of the City of Fountain Valley Fire Department since July of twenty-ten. For more information, you can visit fountainvalley.gov. Uh, additional update, the community drive and multi-chamber social will be held at UPS Store at eight-one-two-one, um, actually UPS Store eighty-one-twenty-three at one-seven-zero-two-four Magnolia Street on Saturday, October fourth, from ten AM to two PM. That is being hosted by the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. They also have the network at night at Los Cab, one-seven-two-seven-two New Hope Street on Thursday, October ninth, from five to seven PM. Connect and network with your local business community. Um, last but not least, uh, the Year of the Rose Gala Honoring Maid Ted Bowie at Saigon Grand Center at one-six-one-four-nine Brookhurst on Saturday, October eighteenth at five-thirty PM. For more information, you can visit um F V chamber dot com. That concludes my update, Mayor.
Thank you so much for the update. As for me, uh, some of the updates, this coming weekend, we'll have a wonderful Hope on Wheels organized by Hyundai, and they do that every year. It's a five-k walk on, and color fun run, so if you have never attended this event, please do so with your family, it's a lot of fun. Um, I think it will not only be enjoyable moment with your family, but I think that will bring joy and a smile on your child. Um, so it is Sunday, right here at the um Fountain Valley Sport Park. I'm sorry, Saturday, Saturday, Sport Park, uh, and I want to make sure there's a time here, oh, I did, on the memo here, there's a, I believe it started at nine, early in the morning, right, nine o'clock or ten?
Earlier than that.
Okay, I remember it's early, it just, I don't have, there was no time on here, so um, if you know exactly time, just, um, I'm not sure what it is, is Rob, is that what's here? Eight o'clock, okay, Rob, thank you so much, that, Rob is our uh director, so he just announced eight o'clock.
The welcoming begins at seven-thirty, you give a speech at seven-forty-five.
Okay, all right, so thank, thank you for that.
How to sign up?
I'm sorry?
How to sign up?
No, there's, there's no.
At the top, Mayor, it's a register at um run sign-up dot com and search for Hyundai.
Okay, there you have it. I didn't, I didn't see it on, on my notes here, so, all right, thank you so much for that. What is it? Okay, that's, there you have it.
So just, just to put that in perspective, last year we had fourteen-hundred, and that was by far the biggest we ever had, and if you want to go and have a great time and get covered in color, I'll be there throwing color at you, so be, feel free to throw it back, too.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next one is we have a town hall meeting, and uh the um, it is an educative uh town hall meeting, and uh it's going to talk about charter city, and it's going to be this Tuesday, September thirtieth at six PM, right here in the chamber, council chamber, uh, and for those who are listening from home, which the address is one-zero-two-hundred Slater Avenue, and it's going to talk about the difference between general city law and charter city. And the next one is going to be on Septa- Saturday, October eighteen at one PM at the Recreation Center, and the address is one-six-four-zero-zero Brookhurst. So just for those who's, you know, wondering, oh, why do we have one on the weekend? We did that purposely for those who cannot attend on weekdays due to their work restrictions, so we picked one weekend uh for those who may not be able to attend on weekdays. Okay, on um, and there's a Halloween decorating contest coming up, please register by October first, so submit your, your home into our Halloween decorating contest. Participation is open to all resident of Fountain Valley with no entry fee. Judging will be based strictly on curb appeal, and here are the um, top three in each category will be awarded. Most creative, creative theme, create a display of characters from your favorite Halloween movie, TV special, or story. Hunted house, recognizing houses that are considered to be scary or spooky. Showstopper, jaw-dropping, over-the-top displays that can be missed. And uh, you're gorgeous, okay, recognize houses that are decorating with pumpkins, a planty, and bringing falls to Fountain Valley. And uh, judge's choice, the best of the best. So who will be the judge? I don't know, do we know? Maggie? Who, who will be the judge?
Um, I don't know the judge, I don't know what um, who knows, but yeah.
Okay, all right, so for those who are interested, um.
Actually, it's a secret, because we don't want anyone to get bribed, you know, no bribing the judges.
Do you know something we don't know?
Always.
All right, so if you're interested, please um email us at F V recreation at fountainvalley.gov. And um, the next one is we have the Fountain Valley Sport Hall of Fame on October eleventh, so Fountain Valley Community Foundation Hall of Fame honors former athletics and teams from Fountain Valley High School and Los Amigos High School who achieve excellence through competitions, coaches who have made a difference in the lives of their athletics, and supporters of the, of the athletic program. The event will be held on October eleventh from five PM to nine PM at the center at Founder Village. Ticket will be sixty dollars and includes appetizer, dinner, dessert. For the list of honorees and for more informations, please contact fountainvalleycommunityfoundations.org for forward slash F V Sport Hall of Fame. Okay, and the last message is the firemer, fire de- fire department open house on October eleventh, resident of Fountain Valley are invited to attend this year, fire department open house scheduled for Saturday, October eleventh, at the fire station one, that is the one uh on Bushard, right across from the uh high school, and it is open from ten AM to two PM. This year's fire prevention week campaign is charged into fire safety, lithium ion in your home. Come join us and you, a tour of the fire station, see a working ambulance along with fire trucks and much more. There will be an area of photo opportunities, games, and prizes, along with a free hot dog lunch. You also want to, you don't want to miss out on the joy of lives and fire extinguisher demonstrations, so we can't wait to see you there if you haven't been there. And actually, there's one more. On a Friday, October seventh, um, Rick, can you bring up that photo if you can, so people can see it? Uh, October, Friday, October seventeen, between the hours of eleven AM to one PM, the state of O C San um is having a free event, so if you're interested of attending, uh, please register the event, so they know uh what's the uh number of tenants could be participating to uh the O C San, and they also have options to tour the, the plant if you haven't toured the plant. It's, it's quite fascinating, the technology that's behind, and for those who don't know, um, the O C San sanitation is not only the biggest in the s- the country, but it's the biggest in the world. They, Senate, uh, I think they, they, it's about a hundred-and-thirty million gallon, I think, I believe, it's about a hundred-and-thirty mega, uh, a day that um, we reclaim the water and go through the sanitation process, and there's several country around the world have visited that site and learned the technology and bring back to their country, so it's something to be proud of, so and, and that, O C San, I, I, I've been to their meeting, amazing, every time they come out, there, there's so much great information about that organizations. So once again, if you're interested, um, sign up, and that lets conclude my uh report. All right, so uh, we are going to recognize tonight Sonesta ES Suite employee Mark Sennova, and I have a. A certificate of recognitions, and I'm gonna read, I'm, first of all, is Mark here? I just want to make sure he's in the room. Okay, all right, I want to make sure you're in the room. Well, in early August, Mark Sennova, an employee at Sonesta ES Suite, heroically call, save the life of a long-term guest by administering CPR. When asked to conduct a welfare check, Mark discovered the guest on the floor, struggling to breathe. Without hesitation, he performed CPR while waiting for the paramedic to arrive. The guest was quickly transported to the hospital, and upon his release, he made a priority, a priority to return to Sonesta Suite to personally thank Mark for his life-saving action. And every minute's count, right? I shouldn't say every second count. Mark, on behalf of the City Council, I'm honored to present you with a certificate of recognitions on your extraordinary act of kindness. So um, well, there goes our amazing fire team, they go and save me alive again. Thank you. So uh, my colleague, would you please care with me and join me down the floor and recognize Mark for his heroic act of kindness?
All right, I'll say something real quick. Okay, so on the day that it all happened, you know, I didn't hesitate on saving him, but I didn't do this for recognition either. I just saw a human that need, I need, I saw a human that needed help. You know, I've got CPR classes due to the fact that I'm a teacher at a school, so it was, you know, mandatory for me to learn it. But without hesitation, I was able to help him. I was glad that he was able to live. He was in the hospital for a good, like, month. But the outcome, he's here with us right now, too. So he's actually back there. He was right next to me. Alright, like I said, I did this for no recognition. I did this out of the kindness of being a human being, you know? Not gonna, it could happen to anybody, you know? But I appreciate the city of Fountain Valley for recognizing me, appreciate this certificate or award, you know? I'm gonna frame this for sure, you know? Thanks again, Mayor Bowie. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Well, Mark, thank, thank you for sharing your act of kindness. It all not only inspire us, but because, you know, your act, that's what it's called, Good Samaritan. Hopefully, this will inspire others in the communities and throughout, you know, the world to continue that act of Good Samaritan. So once again, thank you for what you do. Alright, at this time, since we do not want to have the Bill McQuaid family wait until the end of the meeting, so we, you know, we have decided to recognize you tonight at the beginning and, and join in the memory of the Fire Chief Bill McQuaid. So I would like to invite our acting Fire Chief, Team Saki, to read a prepared statement. Either you, you know, that'd be great.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for having the McQuaid family here tonight. It's been two months today. Tonight, we're, we're just taking a moment to honor Bill, Chief Bill McQuaid. He dedicated almost thirty years of his life to the Fountain Valley Fire Department, and two and a half of those years were as our Fire Chief. Where he demonstrated strong leadership to me personally and to our department, and worked hard to set a vision that will guide our Fire Department for the years to come. Um, we are, we are here grateful for Bill's dedicated service to the city and the community of Fountain Valley. Thank you to Tracy and Allison, Julie, and Bill's family for, for sharing such a wonderful man with us and for being here tonight. Your support of Bill throughout his career enabled him to be who he was and serve the city and the Fire Department like he did. Bill was taken from us too soon, but I promise you that we will carry on his vision and honor his legacy. He would be very proud of us tonight with what we're gonna present to you later. And I know he would. So we will not forget our dear friend, Bill McQuaid. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for those comments. Bill will be truly missed, and for those who really know who he is, he is a really wonderful man. Technically, he was supposed to retire last year. And. And I was looking forward for his retirement. My predecessor, by the end of the year, become the mayor, will recognize him for his year of service. That's, we were all looking forward for that. And I'm sure you were looking for that as well, for his retirement. And unfortunately, giving the proclamations for such wonderful job, what he has done, is wonderful. But we wish we would have gave him a plaque of retirement. That's what we really want. And I'm, and I wanna thank you for supporting Bill McQuaid through all this year. I'm sure there's a lot up and down because he spent a lot of time with the city and this department. So we wanna thank you, Tracy, for your support in supporting him. And he has a different journey now, and we wish him well. And hopefully, hopefully, one day, sometime, in somewhere in the future, we'll come cross paths with him again. Once again, so tonight, on behalf of the city, I have a proclamations for Mr. William McQuaid. And I'm gonna read as follow. Whereas William McQuaid retired from this city of Fountain Valley effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after twenty-eight years of loyalty, commitment, and dedicated service to the Fountain Valley community. And whereas William McQuaid began his fire service career in April nineteen ninety-six as a firefighter, paramedic, and gradually over the year, over two decades, William advanced in his career to his current position as OR Fire Chief. And I say OR Fire Chief. Whereas Chief McQuaid has proactively enhanced his knowledge by attending numerous conferences, such as the Municipal Management Association of Southern California and the California Fire Emergency Medical Services and Disaster Conference. He emphasized the importance of higher education and obtaining his master's degree in public safety, leaderships, and executive fire administration from Arizona State University. I didn't know he went to the, I didn't know I went to the same university he did. He has also received certificates for strategic planning, fire service financial management, and personnel and labor relations. And whereas Chief McQuaid has helped facilitate various programs for the city such as the Spork of Love Toy Drive, the Narcan Distribution Program, Fire Prevention Reserve Program, and many more. And whereas Chief McQuaid brought in new revenue by promoting the Paramedic Subscription Program in Fountain Valley Living Magazine, Community Outreach, and Bus Stop Ads. He also secured a three-year contract with Flock Ambulance and adjust the ambulance billing rates to increase cost recovery. Travel to Washington, D.C. to request and secure a five million dollars for the future Fire Station One. And whereas Fire Chief McQuaid is tremendously tremendous asset to the Fire Department and the city, his leadership and knowledge and experience are valued and appreciated by city council and executive management team and the Fire Department staff. Now therefore, I, Mayor Ted Bowie, on behalf of the Fountain Valley City Council, hereby command Chief McQuaid on his retirement. Thank him for his many significant contributions to the resident of Fountain Valley, and wish him health, happiness, and success in his future endeavor. And may the new journey begins for him. I would like to invite my colleague to come down with me and present these proclamations to his lovely wife, Tracy.
So the, so on behalf of the city's proclamations, and also the Fire Department teams also have a little, it's a small token, but it's thank you.
So if the family wants to join, Chief Caplona, if you wanna come down as well?
Only if I talk.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Alright. Let's give them a few minutes to. Alright, I just wanna give the family a few minutes to clear the room, out of respect of our Fire Chief Bill McQuaid. And it's good order of the city business, Mr. City Clerk, is there any requests to speak on unscheduled matter only?
We have two requests to speak on unscheduled matters. First is Dan Stewart.
Okay, if yes, can you call on those people and we should speak and remind them on the three-minute speaking rule, please?
Dan, you have, you can come and speak. You'll see the timer up here on the screen to your left. You have three minutes.
Mayor, Council, hi. I have a prepared statement. I'm gonna talk fast, so hopefully some of this sticks. We'll see. I am a twenty-five-year resident, and recently I've learned about cameras that have been installed around the city by a company called Flock. These cameras are different than other security cameras that you might be aware of, and I wanted to highlight some of those differences and my concerns about those. Uh, this company is canning our, our cars' feet, scanning our cars' features, like our license plates, bumper stickers, damage. And it's storing them to a nationwide cloud database for searching. And it's doing this without consent or warrant. Uh, this system's not just checking license plates against a hot list of maybe a stolen car or something like that. Uh, but it's, it is using A I analysis to do things like detect cars that appear near each other or routinely travel to the same locations. And according to the company, the system can automatically flag vehicles based on its history, route, or presence in different areas. My concern is that this is really mass surveillance that raises serious Fourth Amendment concerns. And namely, you know, warrantless tracking of our public movement throughout the city with few rules or oversight. Uh, based on recent Freedom of Information Report from F V P D, uh, these readers are scanning movements and making them accessible to hundreds of law enforcement agencies, including federal agencies like ICE, DEA, Bureau of Indian Affairs. And these law enforcement agencies, along with F V P D, can, up to a month after a license plate has been scanned, decide that they're suspicious of a particular individual and see thirty days into the past where they've been in our city. This system has already been used illegally and abused in different ways. And given our current federal government, in my opinion, overreaches that we've been seeing in the news lately, I hope you can see how dangerous that this is. I'm a software engineer, and it's very easy to update these systems to track people based on other characteristics that might change over time or be at the whim of, of people in power, such as healthcare, religion, political affiliation, or, or any other item. Uh, Flock has figured out how to monetize our Fourth Amendment freedoms, is what this boils down to. And our rights, which, you know, were conceived out of oppression from the British Crown, hard fought, hard won, shouldn't be converted into profits for Flock. So I'm here to ask that the city council consider removing this system and keeping our city a nice place to live and protecting our Fourth Amendment freedoms. Uh, I'd like you to join other cities like Denver, Colorado, Austin, Texas, who have decided that they were gonna remove these systems. Uh, if that's not possible, then I would ask that we establish more oversight for how the Flock system is being used by F P D, F B, F V P D.
Dan, your time's up.
Okay. One other thing I'll add is, anyone can talk to me about this if they want. I'd like permission to send you all an email. I have all your emails. Would that be alright? Just with more information about what I'm blabbing about? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we can't comment on it, but all of us have email. I could say the information's there. We can't comment, but we have all the information that's online.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Tina Tapia. Once again, time limit is three minutes. You can see it up on the board, up to your left.
Hola, my name is Tina Cormany. I'm from Kumeya Nation, part of the San Pesquio Band of Mission Indians. I was here last meeting to talk about the lack of resources in the community. As you can see in front of you, I'm wearing a red handprint on my face. This symbolizes the genocide of missing and murder indigenous women and children. Google it, please. I'm not a proud American. After the last city meeting, Kim Constantine was very rude, and even on Facebook, she's twisting my words around. This type of behavior is why a lot of homeless people and people with special needs can't get the right support. I'm asking the city council to Google everything I just said, and please boycott a Native American casinos. We need protection. We need to protect the children and say no to hate and guns. Children do not need guns. We need clean water and clean food. We can do better. There is more, there are too many wars going on at the same time. Have a heart and please come outside and be more involved in the city. There's a lot of these resources that are fake. I understand I'm not a resident of Fountain Valley, but I do have roots to the city. That's why I'm here. Shame on you, Kim, for that disgusting behavior after the city meeting. I hope you get investigated of the misuse of funding and power in the city. I also would like to say Fountain Valley lost another person due to the genocide, due to this modern-day genocide. Ishmael Ayala lost his life during, on September twenty-second, two thousand and five, while in ICE custody. He was taken in his job in Fountain Valley Car Wash during an ICE raid. He was only thirty-nine years old, and he would have been forty years old November twenty-seventh. Google his name, and I hope he will be the last, to wake up, a wake-up call for this to stop. This was a war on top of a war. Children do not need this. He should have been still alive today, but his community failed him. And, and, and me too. Rest in peace, Ishmael. I'm sorry, too.
Senator, following his arrest, the thirty-nine-year-old died Monday alone in a hospital miles from his family. She says, "I have this weight on my chest. No matter how much I wanna cry out loudly, I can't." She cries for the son she never got to hold one last time. Ayala was a Mexican immigrant who came to the U.S. as a child. He received protection under DACA in twenty-twelve, but was denied renewal after two DUI arrests. In August, Border Patrol agents detained him at the Huntington Beach Car Wash where he worked.
It was at Huntington Beach, it was Fountain Valley.
He opened the door in the mornings because the boss hadn't arrived yet. It was in custody that Ayala began to fall ill, something his mother noticed during a visit. She says he already looked bad. His.
Please do your investigation and please educate yourself on genocide, because this needs to stop.
Tina, your time is up.
You cannot comment, but please educate yourself. Thank you very much. You cannot comment, but please educate yourself, thank you very much.
Well, I will comment, Ms. Tapia, your words against me were unwarranted and untrue. And I will always defend my reputation, thank you.
I have no further request to speak.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Secret, do we have any requests to speak on scheduled matter only?
I have no request to speak on scheduled matters.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a consent calendar for one through eight will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless a separate action or discussion is requested.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve, do you have a second?
Mr. Mayor, may I, I'd like to pull item eight.
Yes, okay, all right, so Councilmember Harper is pulling item number eight. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, the consent calendar, with the, pulling the item number eight, so.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For items one through seven?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second? Go ahead, vote on that now? Is it working, Rick?
Okay, there we go.
Here we go, okay.
Sorry.
System was running a little slow. I'm just waiting for Councilmember Harper and Mayor Bowie to vote.
Well, we can go ahead and.
Oh.
It's not popping up. I guess we could do.
How would you like to vote?
Yeah, we did a roll call, I guess.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Items one through seven pass five zero.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Councilmember Harper, would you go ahead and?
You have some questions for our IT, IT Director? Uh, so this, this item is for, I guess, a re, or a consolidation of our GIS systems, is that correct?
This is part of implementing a one GIS system for the city.
Okay, could you give kind of just a, like a one-minute recap of the, how it works now and what's, what's this gonna do for us?
So right now, for the whole city, we have multiple GIS programs, each department, before I kind of got here, there were, each department had multiple GIS. So Fire would kind of have their own GIS, Public Works had a GIS.
And the, and the GIS stands for what?
Oh, you got me. It's basically maps, geographic.
Information system.
Okay, so like, if we have to locate something in the city, yeah.
Basically, if we want to really bring it down, it's kind of like Google Maps, it's mapping it, mapping out systems, so we can map out sewers, we can map out red curves, really anything on a map that you can put in, and information on geography side.
Okay, got it. And so, currently, we have more than one system that does this, and this, this system is gonna consolidate everything, or how does it work?
So the one program right now that Public Works had, it wasn't compatible with the ESRI product that we're implementing. And so, we, working collectively with Public Works and Scott Smith, we were able to have them move over to a new work order and asset system, which will work with the GIS program that we're implementing for the whole city.
Okay, and, well, I, I read in the staff report that it's, not only is it gonna streamline the process, but it's, we're gonna save about thirty-eight thousand a year from this new project?
Yes, and potentially more with consulting and things like that, it may bring down that price, but yes, that's part of it, and not just with GIS, but with everything else, we're gonna continue to negotiate and consolidate programs with multiple departments to hopefully continue to bring down pricing.
Well, I, I like this, I like this project, and I just wanted to also recognize your efforts in this area, I know you've, you know, you're always out there trying to improve our systems and get better streamlined processes and save money in the process, so. Nice job on this.
Thank you.
With that, I will move the item for approval.
Councilmember Harper, I agree with you, now only he does, he always think outside the box, and he try to find a way self-save money for the city too. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, I, I do have to add in, you know, it is a collective work with all the directors, Scott Smith has been beneficial, his department has supported us. So just working with each department, so I couldn't have done it all by myself, it's working with each department, so.
Absolutely.
Now, second, and I'll echo the comments, great job.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a first and a second, let's try to vote this time, if it doesn't work, do I undo it?
You're still not seeing it on your screen?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number eight passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item number nine, I'm going to call on our Housing Coordinator, Ms. Ashlyn Newman, to do a present, uh, report on the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Consolidating Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bowie and Council. HUD requires us each year to do a public hearing before we submit our year-end report for the CDBG program. So tonight, before you do that, I'd like to give you an overview of our accomplishments. So each year, we get a grant, and we use that money to provide activities for low-income households in the community. So last year, we got about three hundred and forty-two thousand, we spent about three hundred and four thousand. And that difference that remains at thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, that actually stays in our books, so we can spend it this year or in upcoming years as it's needed. So our biggest program is the Home Improvement Program, we did, between grants and rebates, we did eleven. Not every project requires lead bait, uh, lead-based paint hazard testing, so we only did four of those, and this also includes the program administration. And last year, up till June, we actually had a part-time consultant handling that for us. Now, effective June second, we have a full-time housing technician again. So we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that. And because we have the Home Improvement Program, we're allowed to pay for staff cost for code enforcement that's conducted in CDBG areas. Now, the white highlighted areas are the new CDBG areas per HUD, so those are the lower-income areas of the city. So our CEOs, they go out and they actually market the program for us, so when they run into somebody who has issues with their properties, property maintenance or something like that, and they can't afford the upkeep, then they'll try to, to refer them into our Home Improvement Program, so then we can assist them in that manner. So for the code enforcement, staff time cost about forty-five thousand dollars, and they abated a hundred and twenty-three violations. Our Public Service Agency Grant Program, HUD only lets us spend fifteen percent of our annual grant on that, which was fifty-one thousand, three thirty-five, and we spent every dollar on that. Meals on Wheels has two programs, the Lunch Cafe Program and the Home Delivery Program. Interval House is a domestic violence shelter that not only shelters, but provides services and education and outreach. Waymakers has a juvenile diversion program that works with our police department in trying to keep kids that have minor, minor infractions out of the justice system. And then Boys and Girls Club does the childcare scholarships. And they helped three hundred and sixty people, so about twenty percent more than what they projected to assist. And then we're allowed to pay for grant administration, so staff cost to administer the program, that's also capped at twenty percent. Under that twenty percent, Fair Housing Cost Services are also within that twenty percent, so we spent fifty-two thousand on that. And then another five thousand on the Fair Housing Services. So HUD requires us to have this program, so our low-income households can get assistance if they're gonna be evicted, or if they have issues with their landlords. And then conversely, Fair Housing Council will also help the landlords if they're having problems with their tenants, so if they need to know if they're doing something illegal, or if they just need advice, Fair Housing Council will help them with that. So they had anticipated helping seventy clients, they helped a hundred and twenty-five with four hundred and four separate issues, they were able to handle everything all in-house, so it didn't have to go to the DA's office or to some other social service programs to, to get into compliance. And then our last accomplishment at no cost to the city, the program that's administered by Orange County Housing Authority is the Housing Choice Voucher Program, previously known as Section Eight. So we have four hundred and thirty-two vouchers in the city, so four hundred and thirty-two low-income households are receiving rental assistance in the City of Fountain Valley at fiscal year end. So tonight, the request is that you conduct a public hearing on the caper, approve it, and authorize the submission to HUD before September thirtieth. And that is the end of my presentation, and I am available for questions.
All right, thank you, Ashlyn, I'll go ahead and open for a public hearing comment, do we have any?
We have no request to speak.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, I'll go ahead and, a question for my colleague, Councilmember Grantis, ready to go?
Hey, Ashlyn, thank you for the report, I'm just curious, do we have an estimate or concern about funding for next year?
Not yet, our current fiscal year is three hundred and one thousand, so that went down twelve percent than this fiscal year. It's really up in the air, I would guess it's gonna go down a little bit, but that, that is really a guess.
So the fiscal year is that through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
Yes, that's the one we're in, and we have three hundred and one thousand for that, city manager just executed the agreement this week.
Excellent, okay, so it's twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, there's concern.
Yeah, and we probably won't hear until, if we're lucky, we'll hear in December. We've been hearing in the spring, when the, the reports are due May fifteenth, usually, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I had a question.
Councilmember Harper.
Can you go back to slide one more? It says that there's four hundred and four issues, which I guess are rent-to-tenant landlord issues, is that what they are? What, what are some of the issues, that seems like a lot to me.
A lot of the calls are about eviction. So I just got a three-day notice, what do I do, you know, my landlord gave me sixty days to move out, is that legal? You know, or maybe there's a dispute about property maintenance, you know, the lease says I have to maintain my property, I think I am, the landlord says, no, you're not cleaning, you have mold under your sink because you're not cleaning properly.
I see.
So then, discussions like that.
Okay, it's various things, okay, all right, thanks.
I want to ask a follow-up question to that, that's a great question, you know, when, when the resident call, but do we get involved with that, because that's more of a civil matter, do we get involved or give them directions?
Well, legally now, if somebody calls us and says, I have mold, code enforcement must go out and look at it. However, they're not trained to identify mold, so they go out and they say, yes, there's a black substance that appears to be mold, and I'll document that, but we don't have an enforcement action on that, that's when we refer to Fair Housing, considered a landlord-tenant dispute, and Fair Housing will try to, to mitigate between the two parties.
Got it, great, thank you for clarifying that. All right, any more comments from my colleague? Nope, all right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I was, I think we have to do a roll call, because it's not working on the screen. Should I bang it?
There we go. There we go, it's, it's slow. All right, do you see it on your screen? Okay.
I do.
Four of you see it, correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Item number nine passes five zero.
Ashlyn, thank you so much for the presentation. All right, the next agenda for the night is administrative items. Approve Amendment Number Two to Con twenty-one dash sixty-three with Bear Electric Solutions LLC, presentation by Ryan Damon?
Damon.
Damon, all right, Engineer Associate.
I'm getting there, Ryan.
Oh, no, you're good. Take your time.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, my name is Ryan Damon, Engineering Associate in the Public Works Group. And the item I'm presenting tonight is Amendment Number Two to the City's Streetlight Maintenance and Repair Services Contract with Bear Electrical Solutions. Several years back, the city purchased SC-owned streetlights, and in response to that, in two thousand and twenty-one, the city issued an RFP to contract out the repair and maintenance services for these lights. In October two thousand and twenty-one, the city entered into a contract with Bear Electrical Solutions for a term of two years with two options at two-year extensions. The contract sum allocated for the annual repairs was a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. So at the end of the initial two-year term, in two thousand and twenty-three, City Council approved Amendment Number One, which extended the contract to additional years with no financial changes. With the contract set to expire on October nineteenth, the proposed amendment two will extend the contract an additional two years, the final two years, and increase the total contract sum, which is the same as contract capacity, by three hundred thousand dollars to match the approved budget. The city's still fairly new to owning and maintaining the streetlights in the city. But we've observed that the routine, the routine maintenance per year costs about an average of seventy to eighty thousand dollars. Over the four-year duration, though, we've noticed that there's been increasing number of streetlight knockdowns, all caused by traffic collisions. While they're random in nature, they are costly, they cost about fifteen thousand dollars to remove and replace, and the pole lead times take about five months to come in. Because of the increased frequency of these knockdowns, the city has a backlog that is planned to get addressed through Amendment Number Two. Amendment Number Two proposes that we increase, or that we extend the contract for the final two-year term and increase the contract capacity by three hundred thousand dollars. This increase aligns with the city's approved fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven approved budgets. It's also worth noting that when we do these contract extensions, the contractor may ask for a CPI increase that's consistent with the published rates. Bear Electrical had initially asked for a sixteen percent increase, but staff were, staff were able to successfully negotiate no CPI increase for this proposed two-year extension. This means that we'll still be going off those twenty twenty-one rates. With this proposed increase to the contract capacity, the city expects to replace twelve to fourteen of the seventeen damaged poles, while also continuing to provide routine maintenance and repairs throughout the city. There are existing streetlights that will not be restored through this contract, and staff plan to address that through future funding requests. The last item worth mentioning is that our risk manager has been working very hard to recover the costs associated with the damaged poles. So far, the city has recovered fifty thousand dollars through the claims process. There are several active claims still pending, and the, the city will continue to pursue them, continue to pursue the reimbursement as they come in. So to conclude, staff recommends that City Council approve Amendment Two with Bear Electrical Solutions to extend the contract for the final two-year term and to increase the total contract sum by three hundred thousand dollars to amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secret, is there any public comment?
I have no request to speak.
Okay, any questions or comments from my colleague? Councilmember Harper?
I have a question, thanks for the report. Is it, since the streetlights have such a long lead time to, to, to get, are, does it make any sense for us to buy it in advance in inventory, or are they all different and have to be kind of custom, custom-made?
Yeah, there, we have several, the streetlights in the city are made of several different materials, some could be marbleite, some could be steel and iron, and they vary in heights. So when there is a knockdown, our contractor sends out the specifications to the manufacturer, and it takes about five months. We have been in conversations with them, though, to order a few in bulk, and so we'll have that as a, we'll be able to be more responsive to, to the knockdowns in the future.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, anybody else? Okay, well, I just want to echo, great job to the team, especially able to negotiate down to the rate twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
That's, that's amazing. All right, with that, do we have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the item.
All right, all right, we have a motion on the floor, first and second, I think we should do the roll call, because it's not working on my end.
We'll try it now, is it showing anything? No luck.
Maybe I should take this gavel and hit it, I'm just kidding.
Mine's working, maybe you're just not allowed to vote.
Oh, maybe.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Item number ten passes five zero.
All right, once again, congratulations, and thank you. All right, item number eleven, it is authorize staff to issue a purchase order to Olieth Fortcell Inc., pursuant to Fountain Valley Municipal Code two point three six point zero seven zero, parentheses alpha, parentheses four, the purchase of four new two thousand and twenty-five Ford Police Interceptor Utility Patrol Unit for two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents through the existing cooperative, cooperative contract with Sourcewell, and authorize staff to dispose of the existing vehicle by means of the best, that, that best meat the city needs. Presentation by Cassandra Burkhardt, Management Aid.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Member, what, what was that?
I hope I pronounced your name correctly, my apology if I missed.
It sounded fine to me, Burkhardt, so you're good.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'll be presenting a request to authorize the purchase of four new two thousand and twenty-five Ford Interceptor So tonight, I'll be presenting a request to authorize the purchase of four new two thousand twenty-five Ford Interceptor Utility Patrol Units. And there's a picture right there. Recently, the police department unexpectedly lost three patrol units due to collisions caused by impaired drivers. These vehicles weren't scheduled for replacement, which left an immediate gap in our fleet needs. In addition, we also have patrol units reaching the end of their service life and scheduled to be replaced and sent to auction. So as routine procedure, older units are due for replacement after four years or when reaching over seventy-five thousand miles in mileage. So staff was able to proactively secure four new Ford Police Interceptor vehicles at Olaf Ford Sales through an existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell. Using these existing contracts gives us competitive pricing and allows for a quick delivery with the receiving date of all four vehicles by October thirty-first of this year. The total cost for all four of the vehicles is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents, which is already included in this year's budget allocation of two hundred and forty thousand in the fleet management fund. So therefore, there are sufficient funds available to purchase all four of the requested vehicles. Replacing these vehicles supports the city's strategic goals by ensuring reliable patrol units and providing officers with the modern equipment they need to protect the community. Therefore, staff is recommending alternative number one to waive the bidding requirements pursuant to Fountain Valley Municipal Code and to authorize staff to issue a purchase order to Olaf Ford Sales for the purchase of the four units through the existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell, and to authorize staff to dispose of the existing vehicles by means that best meet the city's needs. And then I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Grantis.
So two questions. One, you mentioned that they were hit during accidents, et cetera. Are we receiving any reimbursement for those?
We do. So per Ryan Smith, the vehicles that are deemed total losses, the settlement funds would typically be deposited in the self-insurance fund as an insurance reimbursement. We would then transfer the fleet fund to help offset any general fund cost of vehicle replacements. So we do receive the money, and it goes into the.
Do we know how much that is?
It's up to the insurance.
Here comes Heather.
We have our risk managers.
Oh, there you are.
So so far, for vehicle recovery, we've received about eighty-one thousand dollars. I have about a hundred thousand almost pending in claims. So what we do is, when it's a vehicle totaled, we do do that through our insurance company, but we also try to get from the insurance company from the at-fault driver. But because of property insurance rates, a lot of times their limit is like ten thousand dollars, so it's not going to cover it. So it's a big enough expense that we do do it through our insurance.
So I guess my question is, if we're going to receive eighty thousand dollars, why are we asking, can't we offset some of that funding? Or are we going to offset that funding request?
To my knowledge, like you said, Ryan said it goes into a general fund, and then directors will be receiving kind of a quarterly update from me about, we've received this much back in streetlights, this much back for vehicles, this much back for fire hydrants, so they can contact Ryan to potentially get funds from that to reimburse for whatever they need.
Ryan's on his way, so he can answer that question. Ryan's right behind you.
Didn't mean to pull you out of the conference room with everyone.
Okay, what was, sorry, what was the question?
So the question is, we're going to get reimbursed for some of these police vehicles that were totaled through insurance. Can't that offset this cost, or do you just put it back into the general fund?
Well, it goes into the fleet fund where eventually these vehicles are paid from. So the revenue goes into that fund, these expenses come out. So ultimately, yes, they are used to offset the cost of these vehicles.
Okay, all right.
I will say, it's, one of the issues is the time it takes to close.
Sure.
A claim like that, it takes months. So we're doing the best we can, but it's really, we're at the mercy of other insurance companies.
Understood. Okay. I think that answers. We get the money back, we use it, six one, we half dozen the other, so that's fine. But one thing you mentioned, too, is that we try to replace every four years or seventy-five thousand miles.
Yeah, seventy-five thousand miles.
It seems like not a lot of miles, so.
Well.
You know, my car, I drive way more than seventy.
Yeah, Brian could probably.
I know we, they treat their cars a little harder than I probably treat.
They are. There's a lot more starting and stopping, but the big issue is on the motor. So even though the mileage isn't there, because of their equipment, the K-nines and stuff like that.
They run all the time.
The engines are running all day long. So even though the mileage is not as high, the engine hours are quite high on those.
That makes sense. You guys are the experts. I was just curious. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Before we call for motions, I just want to make sure there's no public comment on this one?
No public comments.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from my colleague? Any more discussions?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All right, we have our first and the second. You know the routine, Rick.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Item number eleven passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. All right, authorize staff to issue a purchase order to Plumbers Depot Inc., pursuant to Fountain Valley Municipal Code two point three six point zero seven zero, parentheses alpha, parentheses four, for the purchase of one new twenty twenty-five Gap Vax MC one five one zero dash three S three X combination jet vac truck for seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents through the existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell, and authorize staff to dispose of unit number eighty-nine sixty-nine by means that best meet the city needs. Presentation by Pedro Vasquez, Sewer Storm Drain Supervisor.
Good evening, Mayor Bowie, members of City Council and City Manager. Staff is requesting City Council to authorize a purchase of a new twenty twenty-five combination truck. So the combination truck are used to maintain city sewer and storm drain systems and other activity, making it the most heavily-used truck in Public Works. This truck is used wide, sorry, this truck is used for a wide variety of activities, including the maintenance of one hundred and thirty-three miles, seventy miles of storm drain, and seven hundred and eighty-nine storm drain catch basins that will require in the future full capture system devices per stormwater regulations. And everything listed on this slide, increasing the demand on the already heavily-used truck. This also includes emergency hydro excavation for utility repairs and cleanup for any hazardous material and fire debris runoff. The fiscal review of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, seven hundred and fifty dollars were allocated from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to purchase of an additional combination truck to grow and, to meet the growing needs of the sewer and storm drain division. There are sufficient funds to purchase this requested vehicle, and there will be no impact on the general fund. Recommendations, staff is recommending City Council's approval, alternative number one, to authorize staff to purchase a twenty twenty-five Gap Vax through Plumbers Depot, through the existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell, and to dispose of old units eight-nine-six-nine by the means that best meets the city's needs. This concludes my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Secret, any comment?
No request to speak.
Okay. To my colleague? Councilmember Harper?
I had a question. So this truck is what's used to clean the sewers in the city, is that right?
Correct.
And how long does it take to cover the city? Does it do it the whole year, every two years, three years?
So our goal is eighteen months, but it's also based on either downtime on the truck itself or, like I said, assisting other departments and helping out with the either excavation, cleanup. But our goal for sewer is, like I said, eighteen months. We do have trouble spots that we have to take care of periodically, so everything actually has a setback. So when we do have that one truck that actually works downtime, it definitely slows the procedure for us.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any males? Just last questions. How do you come up with the number of eighteen months? I'm just curious.
So it's typically for the combination truck or for the sewer crew, we try to hit between three to five miles a day. So just, that's the goal. So we do an assessment in three months, and then we kind of figure out, as we're cleaning the sections, we highlight a map in our bay and kind of gives an idea of where we're at. If no distraction is done, we can do it sooner, but we push for eighteen months just to give us a little cushion when things do go wrong.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Grantis?
Yeah, just one comment. Great presentation. You did an awesome job. We appreciate your efforts on this, so thank you.
Truly appreciate it.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor?
I move the item.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, we have our first and the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number twelve passes five zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item is to adopt a resolutions for the City Council and the City of Fountain Valley relating to the classification, composition, and term of employment of employee represented by Teamster Local nine-eight-six, Fountain Valley General Employee Association, Fountain Valley Municipal Employees Association, and Fountain Valley Professional and Technical Unit effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Presentation by Tanya, our Human Resource Director. Good to see you again.
Hi, good evening. Am I tall enough for this? Hi, good evening. I'm Tanya Nowreiz. I'm the HR Director. I'm here to present administrative item number thirteen, adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understandings between the City of Fountain Valley and Teamsters Local nine-eight-six, Fountain Valley General Employees Association, Fountain Valley Municipal Employees Association, and Fountain Valley Professional and Technical Unit effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. So the MOUs for these units represented by Teamsters Local nine-eight-six expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The city completed contract negotiations in May of twenty twenty-five. So the city engaged in labor negotiations and agreed on the economic terms of the MOUs through a letter of understanding. The City Council adopted a resolution approving these letters of understanding at the June third City Council meeting. Although we met and conferred on the economic terms of the MOUs, the city and Teamsters still needed to enter into a successor agreement for those MOUs that expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'm here today to present the new successor MOUs for the bargaining units represented by Teamsters Local nine-eight-six. These new MOUs incorporate the council-approved letters of understanding and reflect some language changes. So the MOUs incorporate the following approved economics. A three-year agreement effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Base salary increases over the course of the contract. One-time payment of thirty-five hundred dollars per current active employee represented by these groups. The thirty-five hundred one-time payment will be prorated for any current active city employees hired during the period from July one, twenty twenty-four to April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. We did an increase to deferred compensation match by a hundred and fifty dollars a month, and we had an additional fifty dollars towards safety footwear for municipal employees. So in addition to the economic changes, we had some language changes that we negotiated with Teamsters. Just to name a few, we updated the MOUs to reflect Teamsters Local nine-eight-six as a recognized union. We added the four-ten city hall schedule. We updated the sick leave usage. We updated the definition of a family member and used a leave for victims of crime and abuse. We updated our bereavement law, bereavement leave section. California law guarantees employees up to five days of bereavement leave from work following the death of a family member. Right now, the MOU say three, so our employees will still get paid for three days, but they're allowed to take five days off. So they'll just supplement that time off with their accruals. We added some holiday language in the sense that this is current practice. So if a holiday falls and employees regularly schedule day off, the employee will take the holiday on another day during the same period. So we have some employees who maybe work a Tuesday through Friday schedule, but the holiday falls on a Monday. So they'll just take that day off on another day during that pay period. So we're just memorializing that practice in the MOUs. We removed class and comp, old class and comp language, so it no longer exists. And then we removed the COVID administrative thank you leave as well, since that is expired. So there's no additional fiscal impact to the budget for adopting these MOUs. That was all approved at the June third Council meeting. And our recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Fountain Valley and Teamsters Local nine-eight-six with Fountain Valley General Employees Association, our municipal employees, and our Professional and Technical Unit effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Do you guys have any questions?
All right, thank you so much, Tanya, for the presentations. To my colleague, anybody else? Any comment?
I do.
You do?
I do, yeah. I mean, I'm going to vote yes, but quite frankly, I was not happy with what transpired with Teamsters, to be very honest. I can't sit here and say anything really, but not thrilled. Hopefully, all will be well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, I want to echo to the amazing team. You know, it was a very rigorous negotiation back and forth. Maggie, she was the one, because I think, how many meetings did you have to go with them, and you share with us? So thank you for those rigorous negotiations. Thank you to our city attorneys for their feedback. Thank you for the, to the team, the HR being persistent to what you believe is best for the city. And I want to thank to my colleague that will stand firm to determine what's the best outcome for everyone. So thank you, everyone, and I'm glad that this is over. And hopefully, I'm hopeful that the next negotiation will be a much smoother ride. So once again, thank you, everyone, for your great effort and for this labor negotiation.
I will, I would give credit to Carrie, Tanya, Ryan, Omar, and payroll staff.
Brianna.
Brianna. So they were the one who was always at the table and so forth.
Once again, amazing team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Grantis.
I also want to thank our employees in these groups. They work really hard. We do what we can to make sure we give a fair wage as best that we can. Twelve percent over three years plus the one-time pay and all that. We truly do appreciate all, each and every employee that we have, and we thank them in this process as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, good.
Well, I'd just like to clarify something. I'm very happy with staff, happy with our city manager Maggie, very happy with Colin, our attorney for the city, and of course, very appreciative to all of our employees. So just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, in other words, we are grateful for the employee that we have. We're also grateful for the staff that we have in trying to find a medium satisfaction for everyone.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right, any public comments?
Yes.
Well, I was going to move approval of the item.
All right, so we have a Councilmember Harper to move the item. Do you have, I'll go and second it. And I should have asked you, Mr. Secret.
There were no public comments.
Okay, I don't want a last-minute online or something like that. All right, once again, so we have a first, and we have a second on the floor, and let's vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number thirteen passes five zero.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, good night. All right, the item number four will be continued on to the next City Council meeting, October twenty-third. So I'll move on to the next one. It will be item number fifteen. It is to request for a one-year extension and CPI increase to the Ali Wade for the Harper and Burns Legal Services Contract, presentation by Rick Miller.
Mr. Mayor, I've got your conflict and leave the room. This is my contract.
Great, I was checking with you to make sure you were paying attention. Thank you.
I was.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. Just a little history on this. Back in September of twenty twenty-one, the city entered into a three-year agreement with Harper and Burns for legal services. That agreement provided the initial term of three years plus two additional one-year terms. In addition to that agreement, it also allowed for Harper and Burns to request a yearly CPI increase to be approved or denied at council's discretion. Proposed for council's consideration is an amendment to the agreement providing for the second of the two one-year providing for the second of the two one-year extensions and approving a three-point-two percent CPI increase. Back in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, council approved amendments and providing for CPI increases. Last year, in two thousand twenty-four, council approved the third amendment. Again, that approved a CPI increase, and that was the first of the two one-year extensions. And that extension terminates September thirtieth of this year. So proposed for consideration tonight is the fourth amendment to the agreement, the last of the extensions that we can grant on this contract. Harper and Burns is also requesting a CPI increase of three-point-two percent. This contract would end September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And in two thousand twenty-six, we will take this out for rebid. I'm anticipating starting that process in March or April of next year and bringing it forward to sometime in summer, end of summer, for consideration of legal services. In regards to the CPI adjustment, you can see on the table, on the screen, the current rate for partner all the way down to paralegal, and then what the adjusted rate would now be if council approves this three-point-two percent CPI increase, what the rates would then reflect for the remainder of this year, this one-year agreement. Staff's recommendation is to approve amendment number four with Harper and Burns for their legal services on the one-year extension as well as CPI increase of three-point-two percent. Happy to answer any questions that council may have on this amendment.
All right, do we have any questions or comment from my colleague? Nope, all right, Mr. Seacrest. Make sure there's no one online that called up last minute, once again.
I have no request to speak.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number fifteen passes five zero.
All right. Thank you so much for getting our city attorney back.
Thank you.
All right, to the Harper and Burns, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is to approve a transition to the proposed city-operated ambulance program and direct the fire department to coordinate a detailed transition plan, including the purchase of capital equipment and funding of additional staff, targeting implementations by November two thousand twenty-six. Presentations by or acting fire chief, Tim Saki.
Mayor Bowie and city council, thank you for having me tonight. It's a very long journey that's coming to fruition hopefully tonight, and I'm proud to present this in front of you. The city-operated ambulance program. I just want to start real quick with a history of our ambulance program. We've been partners with Care Ambulance, who's now Falk Ambulance, for over twenty-five years, starting in nineteen ninety-eight as a contracted ambulance provider for the City of Fountain Valley. In two thousand twenty, Chief McQuade, battalion chief at the time, partnered or pioneered a new public-private partnership with Falk Ambulance, or Care at the time Falk Ambulance, to have what we have today. We're currently in the second, or the first extension of that contract, which we did in December of two thousand twenty-three. That contract expires in December of two thousand twenty-six, and that was the first of only one contract extension. So we would have to go to rebid for that. So our current ambulance model, in our city right now, we have one twenty-four-hour ambulance and one twelve-hour ambulance. That twelve-hour ambulance runs eight AM to eight PM. And each ambulance is staffed by two Falk ambulance operators. And one ambulance resides at the Ayers Hotel. And the other one, the day car, the twelve-hour car, is at a commercial building on Condor Avenue behind the old L-one building. As I said, the contract ends on December first, two thousand twenty-six. And a new RFP would be required to continue that public-private partnership. So going back here, I just want to say we've had a stable partnership with Falk Ambulance for over twenty-five years. Falk Ambulance does manage all the employees, hiring, daily staffing, and personnel issues of their employees. And they do provide the ambulance vehicles and maintenance. They do provide surge ambulance as well, but at a cost. So what I'm presenting to you today is a city-operated ambulance model where we will have two twenty-four-hour ambulances. That's about a, the coverage at, the twelve hours at night is about a thirty-three percent increase in coverage. Our proposals to staff the frontline ambulances with twelve full-time Fountain Valley ambulance operators and the six part-time ambulance operators who will basically backfill the full-time if they take the day off or are sick. Our proposals to house the ambulances inside both fire stations, to add a full-time administrative division chief here in city hall, add a full-time administrative captain, forty-hour, and add a full-time human resources technician. One of the things with the ambulance program that we found doing our research is there's a very high turnover rate. So we anticipate about two, two per year hiring processes where we're gonna have several ambulance operators come through and we're gonna have to replace because of the high turnover. And lastly, purchase four type-three ambulances, which is the type of ambulance we have now, the van front and the box back, and all required EMS equipment. So two of those ambulances will be for frontline use, the twenty-four-hour cars, and two of those ambulances will be for backup, reserve, or surge ambulance response. So how we're making this happen is, part of the private ambulance contract is there's costs associated with administrative costs and built-in profit margin. There's costs that account for the station rent of the Ayers Hotel and the commercial building on Condor. And there's a surge ambulance cost. So all those costs are, all the savings that we're gonna transfer to a city-operated ambulance program are come from those three areas. Also, there's very significant capital startup costs, which when we first discussed this idea in two thousand twenty-three at the start of the contract extension, were gonna be a very large hurdle to get over. So what we've done over the last three years is we've leveraged some federal funding to help cover most of those costs. And the program that we've leveraged is called the voluntary rate range program, which I presented to you in June. To date, we've received one point four million dollars in net revenue from that program, and we anticipate another five hundred and sixty-six thousand coming at the beginning of next year. And I'll show you that in a second. And you see that total cost recovery at the very bottom, about one point nine million dollars that, and those funds actually have to be used to benefit CalOptima patients, and this ambulance program qualifies for those funds to be used. We can't, we're not allowed to recycle those back into the general fund for general use. So you'll see the startup costs for this program, purchasing four ambulances. Another benefit of a city-operated ambulance program is the cardiac monitors will be on each ambulance. That'll allow our fire apparatus to carry the cardiac monitors, to put them back on their rigs if they're gonna be available in the city while the ambulance goes to the hospital. And we'll have that additional capability to respond with life-saving cardiac monitor, AED capability on each engine. There's a lot of things that go into the ambulances. Radio, eight-hundred megahertz radios is a significant expense. That's included in the startup cost and the initial stock of EMS supplies. Ambulance PPE, and then onboarding costs. Those are one of those things that we initially didn't consider, but after consultation with HR and finance, to do backgrounds, life scans, medical, psych, these employees are gonna be living in the fire stations. So those onboarding costs need to be, need to match and get close to what we expect of our firefighters who are living in our stations. And then included in the startup cost, because there's gonna be overlap, the ambulance contract starts the middle of the fiscal year. So in order to start that contract, it's about a six-month ramp-up of work to be done to create all the programs, the policies, the procedures. And also, about a month before is when we plan on starting the training process for our ambulance operators. So you'll see two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in startup costs for that personnel. Estimated fire station modifications, right now, we're in the process of investigating what those actual costs are gonna be. We're hoping that it'll be less than a hundred thousand dollars, but we have, we have to consider, whenever you make upgrades to any city building, you have to consider ADA improvements. So the initial estimates were high for those costs, but we just had a consultant come through last week and will give us some better direction on where to go. So about a hundred thousand dollars potentially, but our intent is not to invest too much money into these fire stations. Our intent is to make them appropriate for a gender-diverse workforce without investing too much, especially in Fire Station One, where we're gonna replace that station in the next three to five years. And also, included in those startup costs are the cost of the human resources technician for part of, part of the fiscal year, this fiscal year, to help with that recruitment, which will start probably before July first for the ambulance operators. So just an overview, overview, overview breakdown of the financial analysis cost of the current program and the proposed program. So estimating about a four-and-a-half to five percent increase guaranteed for a private contracted ambulance program. That's how it's been over the last five years. You'll see the first column, current program. In fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, the budgeted amount is one point seven million dollars. For our proposed program, with part of the year being our contracted, because it's gonna end, it's gonna run old program from July to December, and then from December to June of next year will be the new program. Estimated cost in that is one point seven-three million dollars. And just to note, with that cost, I added a five percent contingency that's included in that cost, just in case we have any unforeseen costs. So you'll see initially before we, when we initially proposed this to you guys in the first meetings with you, we didn't include the HR technician. But we believe that this is a very important position that needs to be added due to the increased demand on the human resources department for the turnover. So it's gonna cost the first year six hundred, or sixty-seven thousand dollars more than the current program. And then moving forward, about forty thousand dollars between the two additionally to what we pay now. But what we get out of a city-operated program is, is the benefits far outsee, or exceed the costs that we're gonna be encountering. Just for example, a forty-hour division chief for our organization, that was a position that we had when I got hired here in two thousand seven. We lost that position in two thousand eight during the economic downturn. But that position will be able to oversee fire operations, training, EMS, take a lot of the assignments that our battalion chiefs currently handle, working shift work out of their responsibility, and allow our shift battalion chiefs to get out more with their crews and train, focus more on personnel development and succession planning. And having a, another chief officer here in city hall, from my perspective, what I, what Bill tried to do when he first got promoted to fire chief was pull a division chief in to help him out. Because there's a lot that happens here at city hall. There's a lot of meetings that the chief officers need to attend to. And every other agency in Orange County operates, has chief officers that operate off that forty-hour schedule, and they schedule their meetings. And I will tell you from personal experience, it's very difficult to work shift work, fifty-six-hour weeks, and then, and then attend meetings on our days off to where, to match up and align with other agencies in the county. So this will allow us to be way more efficient on an administrative level and also create a much better method of succession planning for the fire chief role. I know Bill and I were working really hard in this, in this fashion over the last six months, but me working the forty-eight, ninety-six schedule, it was difficult. There would be times when our schedules, schedules wouldn't line up for a month, and I would not be able to get over to city hall on my shift, you know, which would require me to come in on my days off. And, you know, having the EMS captain position too, that's an important position for us as well, because that'll allow someone, right now, our floor captains handle staffing for our thirty-seven personnel that are on the floor. And that in itself is a full-time job. So managing our thirty-seven personnel with taking time off, injury, people going out on strike teams, to expect them to manage twelve additional ambulance operators on a daily basis is unrealistic. So this forty-hour EMS captain will handle those administrative duties. There'll be a single consistent point of contact for ambulance operators. They'll provide consistent management of our EMS supplies and ordering. And they'll, they'll provide improved ambulance operator training. Right now, we have, we have two different agencies managing employees. We have Fountain Valley employees managing our ambulance, private ambulance operators, to meet the Fountain Valley's expectations. But those ambulance operators are also operating under Falk ambulances, procedures, and rules. So it's a little inconsistent sometimes of who they report to. So this will streamline that, that report. It'll put those ambulance operators in-house. It'll streamline our, our training and how we operate out in the field. And most importantly, response times will be improved. These ambulances will be responding out of the stations. They won't be going through any secondary dispatch or being in a hotel, and it'll provide better, quicker response. And the last thing, there's, there's a lot of opportunity having our own ambulance for providing services to the community and improving how we respond. Just an example, right now, our fire engines respond out on help-up calls, where we're sending a forty, forty-five-thousand-pound engine down the street to help someone up off the floor. So we're able to utilize our ambulance operators in our, in our city rigs to handle some of those more service-like calls and keep our fire apparatus ready and available to respond. So there are some challenges. I mentioned AO recruitment, that's gonna be a constant battle for us. The fire service is constantly hiring, and our intent is to, is to use this pool for us, for our department, as a hiring pool potentially, where we can vet some of these employees at a lower level and see if they're suitable for working for our department. But they get, they get hired very quickly. So there's gonna be that, that constant challenge of keeping our ambulances staffed. Right now, until we get Fire Station One built, temporarily, we're gonna house them in the station. In modifications, the stations will be crowded. Vehicle procurement, why we're coming so soon, our contract expires next December, but we need to order those ambulances officially now, because it could take twelve to twenty-one months for those. And then, you know, the challenges of terminating a contract and starting a new one, we just, we need to make sure that we get our program set up and aligned, and we've accounted for that with the startup of some of these positions throughout next fiscal year. And then, like I said, the new increased workload on other departments, HR, we're mitigating that increase with adding the HR technician. So here's, here's just a quick estimated timeline. Place the orders for the ambulances this next month. Finalize some of the job classifications for some of these new positions we're asking for. Have discussions with outside agencies for surge response, Huntington Beach and Costa Mesa and other fire agencies that have their own ambulances, establishing agreements with those for automatic mutual aid. And that's one of the areas where we're gonna cut down on the cost of having a surge ambulance come to our city. June two thousand twenty-six, start that AO process. July of two thousand twenty-six, start the background personnel onboarding process for hiring those employees. November, a month before the launch, have those employees in place and start that academy. And in December two thousand twenty-six, start the city-operated ambulance program. So I could read all these, but do you have any questions first for me?
So. Member Hubbard?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So I guess getting back to the start of this program in two thousand twenty, we have, there's some special, I don't know, grandfather billing ability that the city has in order to make this program work. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So that's called two oh-one rights. And basically, there's, there's two types of rights. There's, in, in Orange County. There's, there's, in, in Orange County, how we operate, and you, you saw that recently with the county board of supervisors. Certain cities that have had established ambulance transport in, our care ambulance contracts started in, I forget the year, in the 90s, but we, the city has established 201 rights, which means we own the rights to operate an ambulance transport program in our city. And those are established through state law and past practice. Other areas that don't have that established, the other areas in Orange County that, they're called EOAs, emergency operating areas, those areas, those cities in those areas do not have the rights to have their ambulance, their, their city itself manage the ambulance program. So what, what we want to be careful of and why we're presenting this today is, we want to make sure that we maintain the city's 201 rights by having our own program and maintaining our own program and continuing that. And having a fully city-funded operated ambulance program will establish that. If there's any changes in legislation down the line in the future that could jeopardize that or change those rights or take those away, our hope, our hope is when those, those laws change, if they do, because we have an established program that's city-operated, city-owned, that we will be grandfathered into any future changes.
Thank you. And because of the, we have these 201 rights, by transitioning from a care ambulance where they did all the ambulance providing and build the customers and all that stuff, we were able to bring that billing in-house and then achieve some cost recovery that we could use toward our, our paramedics and other emergency services. Is, is that-
So in, in 2020, when we revamped our program, so before 2020, we contracted with, with Care Ambulance, and part of that contract was the billing, Care handled the billing. So we basically paid a much lower rate for ambulance service, because Care was collecting most of that, that ambulance revenue, and then they were, they were filtering some of that, a small percentage of that, back to the city. What we did and what Chief McQuaid did in 2020 was, we changed that model to have Fountain Valley, the city of Fountain Valley, become the biller of record, and we contracted a private billing company to manage the billing for us. So we, we collect all the revenue from ambulance transport minus about a 4% take from the, the billing company, and we contracted with Care Ambulance only the ambulance vehicle and personnel. And we still maintain, I mean, the, the whole time, we maintained control of the ambulance. We basically had a public-private partnership since the 90s for the service, but that billing change was made in, in 2020. And that's when you see, if you look back at the, the fire department budget, that's when you see the huge jump in EMS revenue from ambulance transport. And we've maintained that, and so the, the billing methodology won't change, we'll still maintain Whitman as our billing provider. And the only increase in billing that you'll see is either increase from increased call volume and more ambulance transports, or if we take advantage of programs like we did over the last couple of years, the voluntary rate range program, where we're able to draw down money from the federal government or the state.
Okay. And do you, do you, do you know about how much per year we've been able to achieve in cost recovery from this transition, this program?
So-
I know it varies, but-
Our, our projected revenue for ambulance transport per our billing company is for over $4 million this year alone.
Is that net of our costs, or is that just, just gross?
That, that's, that's pure EMS revenue, and I'm not taking into account how much the, so, so you could, you could subtract about 4% of that for, for the, the billing company's take of that.
But, but I, I mean, I'm, if you deduct the surge costs and all the ambulance costs and-
Oh, no, that's, that's strictly revenue. So, so if we look at this, the proposed program cost-
Okay, so take this off of the, so, so if you take this roughly $2 million a year that we're achieving in cost recovery as a result of the public-private partnership that converted in 2020?
Correct.
Okay, and to preserve our 201 rights, which make this program possible, if we have the city operated program, it, it's kind of another way to-
It will-
Kind of cement those rights. I don't know if-
Correct.
The city attorney can weigh in on that, but-
No, that's correct. To keep our 201 rights, we have to provide ambulance services in-house or by contract since 1984. And we've done that. This will, this will continue those rights and give some greater control over, over ambulance services. So in that regard, it'll strengthen the rights.
Okay. Well, I think it's a, I, I, you've done a lot of work on this program. I really appreciate the, the, the effort here. It's, I am nervous about bringing so much, so much headcount on to the, to the city, but you know, these numbers look like it's about a, about a break even with improved benefits to the city. But I, I think we should kind of keep monitoring it and after, you know, a couple of years, see if, see if, see if the numbers are tracking or if, you know, if we need to correct mid-course, but I think it's a good, good, good idea to move forward.
Councilmember Grandis?
Yeah, I, I think we need to emphasize the, not just the cost here, is it's the additional value we bring to our residents. We're going from one ambulance, 12 hours a day, one 24, to two 24 hours a day. The pool of having ambulance drivers working closely with, with the firefighters. I think also the big consideration here is, there's so many additional benefits, that's, that outweighs just the cost of it. Also, one thing that I think you didn't mention, or maybe I'm, I'm off here, but these additional positions that we're hiring are not going to do 100% just ambulance too. So there's other things, even though we're including the cost in here, they're 100% of the cost in here, 100% of their time is not going to be here. I actually think you should only allocate what they're doing towards this, and the numbers will look even better.
Correct, yeah. I, I will say administratively, our, with these new positions are, we'll be able to do much greater things altogether as the fire, or as a fire department here and serve the community better. There's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we, we get distracted with throughout the day that this will free us up to. There, there's, you know, out in the community, fire department involvement, having, just having a second person here will allow us to search for those things and seek out those opportunities to serve the community better.
I also think the reduced wear and tear on the engines, that wasn't calculated in here either, additional cost savings. So I think you were very conservative in your numbers. I also think you were a little conservative in the value intrinsically outside of just the funding of this. So I'm excited for this. I, I am very thankful for Chief McQuaid and for you and for all of our firefighters who worked so hard to put this together. I think it's going to be an improvement to our community and a tremendous value.
I agree.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Grandis, anybody else?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Constantine?
Well, thank you very much, Tim. Much appreciated presentation, and we do have a great fire team and a great paramedic membership program that I always try to promote, and I'm really looking forward to this. It's going to be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Well, I want to echo to some of the point Councilmember Grandis has pointed out, but I also understand the concern of Councilmember Harper, because I think to his point is, when we start this program, it's not for a short period of time. We want the longevity of the program to last for decades. I think that was his point. So he, he wants, he understands that's a great program. He just wants to make sure that we monitor those numbers carefully, so we don't have to, in the future, oh, we got to scrap this thing because it's costing us too much money. We don't want that. Definitely, it's going to bring a greater service to the community, to our residents. And not only that, I, the idea of this program, I think it's also to hope to bring more talent firefighters that will join the firefighter, you know, working for the ambulance, you know, saving people's lives. Perhaps that's a way for us to retain those employee that wants to go into the firefighter's field, because they enjoy what they do, what they see, what they come across every day. Hopefully, that's also a tool to attract new employee. So I think that's also the goal, not just to bring the value to the resident.
Yeah, correct. It, you know, the concept is cradle to grave, right, where we, you know, we do have a reserve firefighter program, but those, those reserves are in the firehouses one to two times a month. So this will, this will create a huge opportunity for us, because a lot of our reserves will work for us, but there's no, there's no opportunity for, for future movement that's, you know, so this will allow us to vet those employees, because that's the biggest part, is like, getting to know them and making sure they're a good fit, and they're going to be good Fountain Valley workers. And so this is a great opportunity to have an entry-level, young people that are energetic and bring them in and show them what we're about, because you saw that with Chief McQuaid, and our culture is, is one of the best in Orange County, in my opinion. We're one of the best. You know, Miss, Chief McQuaid would say we're the best west of the Mississippi, and, you know, as cheesy as that was, it's true. I'm very proud to be here and standing in front of you, and I'm very excited, and I think this will be a great program for our, our department and our community.
I want to ask one, I just, a thought just came up here, want to add, if we are implementing this program, right, basically, we have our own ambulance program, and God forbid, you know, we're experiencing in the future something like in 2020, and would this will prevent us from having outside ambulance or because we have our own, or we still continue to be able to have those servers as well?
Like bringing outside ambulance in?
Right, just in case-
So-
Overwhelmed call, right? Because that's what happened in 2020. There was overwhelm, they were sitting outside the hospital, there was no bed.
Yeah. So, so part of the, part of the surge response as a contingency would to be established contracts with private ambulance to provide that surge response if necessary. So Brea Fire Department just went to an ambulance mod, private, or a, in-house ambulance model, and they have contracts with some of the ambulance companies up there. Fullerton is doing the same thing, they're currently in that process, but that's a, that's a backup contingency. That would, that would be a cost that would increase that I did not include in the numbers, because we hope to eliminate those costs. But we have to, we have to create a very robust surge response time, because not just instances like COVID or long hospital wait times, but if we have a major accident on the freeway where we require multiple ambulances, that's where we're going to leverage those automatic aid agreements with places like Huntington Beach or Costa Mesa or even Newport Beach. And maybe eventually in the future, as more agencies come online, have a more regional ambulance mutual aid system where we can provide ambulances to each other.
Okay, it's, it's great to hear that you're reassuring that you, you will figure out a robust system, so that way we don't fall into that pitfall, should, you know, we need more backup. Well, thank you so much. On that, any more discussion from my colleague?
Nope.
Okay, so do we have, make sure-
Do I need to read all the alternatives?
No, I don't think you need to. I will move to adopt alternative number one, and I know Chief McQuaid's looking down, so-
Yep. I know, I'll second that. I am sure Chief McQuaid is part of this program.
He would be.
And we are, we are proud of it as well. Thank you so much, and I'll go in second.
Are you able to see a vote? No? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 16 passes 5-0.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for future considerations, do we have any?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember?
I, I didn't have any, but I have one now, because I hate to let an opportunity go by. So I'd like to see actually a, a study session on code enforcement.
On what?
You know, code enforcement? We have a code enforcement here in the city.
Are you saying they're not doing their job? What do you mean by-
No, 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 no. To educate, you know, people on, you know, what they do and, you know, who might-
Maybe you should hold a council member coffee and do it like that.
Yeah. That's-
Well, we have study sessions on various topics. Is this not feasible?
All right.
Well, I mean, okay, we have some businesses that are hosting the flag banners, and we don't permit those here in the city, and I brought that up on a number of occasions. I just think that more awareness on certain things is helpful. Sometimes people have pools that are not maintained, and Orange County mosquito and vector control needs to get involved. So like if there's mosquitoes around, you know, like who to call, who to, who to connect with? Come on, can somebody just muster up a second?
All right. I don't hear anything?
Oh, my, okay.
Anybody else have any item for future consideration?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do. I'd like to, I think for a feature consideration, Proposition 50 is on the November 2025 ballot, which is, proposes to sort of suspend the independent redistricting commission for a couple of years. And I, I think it's, I think it's a really bad idea. You know, it's, the independent redistricting commission is, I think, one of the great things that California has done. And so I would like to propose that, that as a city, we take a position opposing Proposition 50. That's my-
I'll second that. All right.
And I think we should-
Could we do it in December?
I think we should do it by the next meeting. I have a draft here, because, you know, time being of the-
You know, our city has tried very hard to stay nonpartisan and not get involved in that, you know, you, it's going to be very controversial. It's not something we have any direct control over. We typically don't get involved in ballot initiatives, you know, they were going to get half the people saying it's great, half the people saying we're just fighting what Texas did. And it's temporary, so you know, your argument of that, I think everybody agrees that an independent is important. It, it just Fountain Valley is, is better than that. You know, Fountain Valley doesn't get involved in these national chaos. And, and I think this is what that is. I, I would strongly suggest that we don't do this.
All right, well, we have a, a request on the floor, and I believe there's a second already. So I guess you can raise your point at the time. I think to-
We're going to have a very long meeting. Let's just plan for it.
I mean, this is not our, it's true, we don't get involved with this. I mean, I'd much rather educate the public on, you know, one of our departments.
Which we can, if you want.
Well, you guys do not second my, my idea, but-
This is what has separated Fountain Valley from our neighboring cities for a long time, is that we don't get involved in the national chaos, and this is national chaos right now.
Yeah, I, I understand in, you know, in the, in the seven, six and a half years I've been on a council, I've never felt the, I guess, the urgent, urgency, urgency, I felt the need to, or the significance of something to bring it up as something we should take a position on as a city. But this one, this I feel very strongly about, and I know there are opinions on both sides, but I, I, I do think that this is one that the city should take a position on, recognizing that normally we stay out of this stuff, but this one, I'd like to weigh in on.
So Maggie, would this fall under our legislative platform? I mean, we do have a set annual plan of what we-
Let me, let me-
Participate in.
Let me interject for a second. First of all, this is item for future, future considerations, and it was put out there and we have a second. So, and if you want any more discussion, then we'll have that on the next meeting.
Well, this is not a discussion. This is just asking if it's appropriate or not.
It's-
Before it goes to the staff, I mean, if, shouldn't we know at this point?
I don't believe, I don't believe it's on the legislative platform. I can take a look. Even if it is on the legislative platform, it might rise to the, to the level of controversy that really needs to be a council decision, rather than a letter going to the legislative platform around council.
Okay.
I, I just, again, I feel all it's going to do is create chaos here, and it will not change anybody's opinion one way or the other, whether we do a resolution or not. It's just chaos, and that's what it's going to be.
All right. All right.
All right. All right. So we have a, we have a second already on that item. Anybody else for any future?
Is that be presented October 7th?
Yeah, I think that's what you said. Next.
Yeah, I would like to, at the next meeting. Thank you.
I, I would think we should have staff, if they're able to do this in time.
He's still presenting it.
If the council needs me to get it on, I can get it on.
I'm, I'm sure between Colin and I.
I thought you already finished the agenda for the next meeting already. And we, we talked about adding something else earlier today. And we couldn't add something else earlier today. So now we're going to add this? At least if we're going to do it, let's, let's do it at the second meeting in October.
Can I, first of all, he's, Councilmember Gwynn is asking questions that adding more stuff on the agenda. I, I'm not aware of any of that discussion.
About agenda preparation?
Yeah.
Today, for the October 7th meeting, as far as staff reports go, today would be the deadline to submit staff reports.
Okay.
We did talk about this earlier, like an hour ago, two hours ago.
About to add, add more items.
Yes, I can't speak about what it was because that was in closed session. But we couldn't do what we wanted to do on closed session at the next meeting. Because we told there wasn't enough time for staff to do it. And now we're going to add this? So if we're going to be consistent, at least do it at the second meeting of October and give staff chance.
I understand your point, but I think Councilmember Harper, I think he called for the urgency. Because I think, when is this thing, it's going to be on the ballot to be voting anyway?
November.
November. The election's always the first Tuesday of November.
Okay, then if November.
It'll be November 4th and our second meeting in October will be the 23rd.
October 6th.
Oh, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
That ballot's going out on October 6th. Our next meeting is October 7th.
Yeah, the, the vote by mail ballots will start going out.
So that, that makes sense why he want, okay. That makes sense. Okay, well, we have a second already. So anybody else have any item for future consideration? Nope. All right, I have one item for future, future considerations. We should look into whether we should follow the county banning the drug. As reference to a synthetic drug, quetum? That is a derivative of opium. And the Orange County has been that throughout the county. And we want to take a look at that, if it's appropriate to have that banned. Because there's a few cities around the county are following the banning of that drug quetum as well. Because of the derivative that's currently available for.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
But not at the next meeting?
Yeah, I didn't say the next meeting. Okay. All right, I don't hear any other requests. So we're going to move along. Do we have, Mr. City Clerk, is there any request to speak on schedule matter?
I have no request to speak.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call on Councilmember Gwynn. Would you please give your housing authority AB 1234, please?
Yes, first off, before I do that, I want to thank my colleagues and city staff. We don't normally meet on Thursday. This was accommodation because we had strategic planning on that Tuesday. But also I had a business meeting that would have made it very difficult for me to be able to attend the meeting. So I want to thank my colleagues for accommodating me with that. So I appreciate it.
Let me interview there as well. I want to do a reciprocal. I want to thank my colleague as well. Because on the next meeting, it was supposed to be in October 19?
Second.
I'm sorry, it's 22nd, but we have to move to a Thursday as well because I will be attending a conference in DC for, with ACCOC. So I want to thank my colleague.
All right. I'm going to go through this quick. Wednesday, August 20th, I attended the Celebration of Life for Chief McQuade down at Marinish Church in Irvine. That was a, just a phenomenal, phenomenal turnout. Great celebration of what a wonderful person Chief was. And then that evening over at Heritage Park, we had more for the local city event. Again, memorializing Chief McQuade. And I want to thank staff and everybody who worked so hard to put that together. And Chief Saiki, I know you did so much for the memorial down in Irvine and here. And everybody did. So big thank yous to everyone. And I know everybody was happy to do it for him, so. On Thursday, August 21st, the foundation, Family Community Foundation meeting and the volunteer meeting. On Monday, August 25th, there was a special board meeting for OCPA. On Tuesday, August 26th, one thing on OCPA, quick update. So I know there was some question and concerns about Irvine. Irvine has pulled their request to any type of rights to remove themselves from OCPA. So going forward, OCPA is much stronger. I know the city of Stanton and also the cities of Costa Mesa are very close to hopefully joining as well. So it's getting bigger and stronger. So very excited about that. Tuesday, August 26th, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Board Meeting. Wednesday, August 27th, I attended the OC Sanitation Steering Committee meeting. On Friday, August 29th, the HAM final reveal over Advanced Beauty College. That was a, it's artistic work. I guess this is something in Vietnam that is, maybe Maggie, you could help explain the, the HAM thing at Advanced Beauty?
The ham?
Ham.
Oh, ham. Yeah, it's the alley. And there's an art piece at Advanced Beauty Salon, yes.
Yeah, it was, it's great. It's bringing a beautification to the area. And I was one of the ones that helped in a small way, painted months ago. And it was the final reveal. That's Tam Nguyen and his family that spearheaded that. It was a great event. And then on Friday, oh gosh, I can't read my writing, September 5th, oh, the OC Lobster Fest. So that was a fun event. The 14th through the 21st, I'm sure we're going to talk more about that at the next city council meeting. But myself and my colleagues attended the Sister City Conference in Osaka, Japan. And then Maggie and I went and visited a potential sister city about two hours north of Tokyo. And on Monday, September 22nd, the OCPA Marketing Meeting. That's it.
All right. Thank you so much for the report. Councilmember Constantine?
Sure. Well, I did submit my report already. But I do want to say too, in the news, based on mosquito abundance and surveillance data, the Orange County Mosquito Vector Control District staff will conduct residential adult mosquito control in the city of Fountain Valley on September 29th, the 30th, and October 1st. And that's between midnight and 5:00 in the morning. And I did post this on Facebook and Nextdoor. If you have any questions, to please contact Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And their website is ocvector.org. And on that homepage, you'll see one of the tabs for spraying schedules. And you can learn more about that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Harper, please.
Thank you. On August 20th, attended PCTA Board Meeting. August 25th, OCTA Board Meeting. August 27th, OCTA Finance Committee Meeting. August 28th, OCTA Regional Transportation Planning Committee Meeting. August 28th, later in the day, CalCOP Finance Committee Meeting. September 5th, went to the Lobster Festival for the welcome. And congratulations to the Parks and Rec Public Works Department on a great, great job there on the festival. I think it was, we had good weather. So that was great. September 8th, OCTA Board Meeting. September 10th, OCTA Finance Committee Meeting. And September 10th, went to the police badge ceremony at the Saigon Grant Ceremony and Center. We had eight, eight recipients of the badges. I think there were two recruits, a couple of corporals and sergeants. That was a great event, really classed it up. So we gave the police some, some great recognition there. September 13th, went to the Rotary Club Event, Ed Arnold Volunteer of the Year. And it was honoring Larry Crandall, who was really just, you know, given so much to our Fountain Valley community. It was a great turnout, a great event. So I really enjoyed that. And it was great to honor Larry, give him a tribute. Well deserved. It, September 17th, PCTA Meeting. September 18th, Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee Meeting. And then September 20th, last Saturday, went to the Miss Fountain Valley Breakfast at Fountain Bowl. So we had our Miss Fountain Valley, plus some, I guess, some, some new possible contestants and some misses from other cities. So it was a great turnout. And then this Monday, went to the OCTA Board Meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Harper, Vice Mayor, can you please?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 20th, I participated in the transport ceremonies and Celebration of Life Event later that day to honor our late Fire Chief Bill McQuade. It was a continual blessing to me to witness the outpouring of love from everyone whose lives were touched by this great man and civic hero. On September 3rd, I participated in the inaugural Fountain Valley Citizens Academy, right here in these chambers. The focus for this first session was explaining the roles and responsibilities of the mayor, the city council, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. On September 4th, I attended the Cal City's OC Division Meeting in Stanton, where Deputy City Manager Rob Frizzell and I heard an update, really comprehensive, complete services from Chief Brian Finacy, as he can only do. On September 5th, I participated with all my council colleagues onstage for the opening of the annual Lobster Fest. The next day, that Saturday, together with my wife, Mimi, and some of my fun in-laws, we enjoyed the Michael Jackson Cover Band and then Devotional, a Depeche Mode Tribute Band, which we actually follow around to see. So that was a lot of fun for us. On September 12th, I attended the Annual Mobility 21 Transportation Industry Event at Disneyland Hotel in Anaheim. Between September 16th to the 19th, I attended the Sister Cities International Summit with most of my council colleagues, City Manager Lee, Public Works Director Smith in Osaka, Japan. As mentioned, we'll discuss this trip in more detail. But one highlight for me was on the last day, the closing session, I got to meet a Japanese university student. Her name was Henri Akagawa. And she was one of the many students who were actually in the last session for the purpose of meeting city leaders and trying to connect. I wasn't surprised that she said Shohei Ohtani was her favorite baseball player. She said she even went to a Dodgers game and saw him. She also went to an Angels game. And I thought, wow, that's great. We're talking about our favorite sport, baseball. On September 24th, I participated together with City Manager Lee in the award ceremony for a $550,000 grant from the Orange County Business Council for enhancing the Little Saigon Business Improvement District. This was held at Assemblyman Tretas' office in Westminster. And we were joined by OCBC staff and leaders from Garden Grove and Santa Ana. And we're working on Westminster. Right? And then lastly, this afternoon, I attended the State of the City Event for the city of Placentia, which is always fun to join. And I want to mention that I, I got to meet their Fire Chief, Corbin. And he, he recognizes that we are doing something bold here with the ambulance program. And he says he's following us. So I said, well, stay tuned. So that concludes my report.
That's great to hear. Thank you for the report. So I've submitted my report to Rick Miller earlier. I just want to make a few comments. This year has been a very difficult years to many of us. We have lots, so many great people, those who have served their service to the city. You know, like a former police chief, Kevin Chow, our Fire Chief, Bill McQuade, and a great influencer, Ed Arnold. So we have lost a lot of great people, as well as American, in American. Such as, you know, as we all know, we've seen the tragic unfold before us. Not only before us, but in front of their own child, the loss of an American, Mr. Charlie Kurt. So I want to leave you with this. So in life, that you worry about whether you're going to get healthy or going to get sick. If you are healthy, you got nothing to worry. But if you are going to get sick, two things you have to worry. Whether you are going to get better or get worse. If you get better, there's nothing to worry about. But if you are going to get worse, there's two things to worry about. Whether you're going to live or die. But if you're going to live, there's nothing to worry. But if you're going to die, there's only two things to worry about. Whether you're going to heaven or to hell. If you're going to heaven, then there's nothing to worry about. But if you're going to hell, there's two things you have to worry. Whether it's going to be original or extra crispy. I'll leave you with that, those thoughts. Once again, thank you everyone for those who are able to join today's meeting. And I will adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting on October 7th at 6:00 PM in Fountain Valley. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one before I close the meeting. In memory, not only a great, you know, asset to the city, but also a great asset to the Burns Harpers Firm and a dear friend to Mr. Colin Byrne. So in memory of another great person, and those who knew him, who, who know William Bill. He has a lot of great sense of humor in every speech. And, and that's inspired to some people, you know? You have a bad day, when you hear him, it cracks you up. So for those who, you know, who know him, so I want to read a, a closing remark in honor of William Bill Curley III. Bill was a partner at Harper and Burns LLP, which serves as an attorney for the city. His dedicated careers include over 35 years representing cities and public agency. In additions to representing Fountain Valley, Bill served as a city attorney of Mission View, Palmdale, Upland, and many other cities and agency. Bill was an outstanding lawyer and expert on planning and zoning law. He began his municipal career as a planner in the inland empire. He taught planning and zoning law to municipal attorneys throughout the state. Bill was also a character. His knowledge of the law was eclipsed only by his sense of humor. Absolutely true. Bill was a family man and a survivor by his adult son, William Curley IV, and Zach Curley. Bill was a great man who will be missed by those he mentored and served, including the Fountain Valley community. So in memory of Bill Curley, our deepest sympathy to you, to you in the passing of your loved one. All right. We're all going to adjourn this meeting. And our next regular meeting will be October 7th at 6:00 PM, right here at the Fountain Valley Councilmember. Once again, thank you everyone. Have a good night. And may bless you all.